Is what it is.
Like a restriction where you can only use.
You can vote on the board. And then vote on, hey, you can block this. And then you get all the votes. And then, and then once.
It's restricted.
And then once they get all this, and we vote on this. Then later on, you've got to go just actually step aside. I mean, it's to the extent.
Dylan does yours or yours?
Yeah, that's me.
That's where I work as a health, it's a power point.
Yeah, yeah.
Ready, Pat?
Yes, I am.
All right. Six P M. We'll call this regular village board meeting to order if you'd all please join me in a moment of silence. And a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, would you take the role, please?
Trustee Nice.
Here.
Trustee Try.
Here.
Trustee Ferguson.
Present.
Trustee Charles.
Here.
Trustee Gerger.
Present.
Trustee Fletcher.
Here.
Village President Kimzy.
Present.
Uh, any public announcements this evening?
Oh, uh, Les Morgan wants to let us know that the Declaration of Independence will be read.
July four.
July four, at noon at, uh, the Veterans Memorial on Square.
Okay.
He's an election judge. He's working.
Oh, yeah, Les is busy today. Um, also, we want to congratulate, uh, Grandpa Village Administrator.
It'd be grandfather.
Oh, grandfather, very, very formal.
Yes.
Grandfather, just, yeah, that's.
Don't I look more grandfather-y than Grumpal?
I think Paul.
Grumpal. That's what my brother called me.
That's probably accurate. We'll, we'll, we'll go with Grumpal McCarthy.
Congratulations.
So congratulations, Pat and Sean and Kara. All right, public comments on agenda topics. Uh, Ms. Rogers has signed in.
Yes.
Can you say your name?
Yes, Diana Rogers, R O G E R S, four hundred West Mulberry Street, here in Chatham.
Thank you.
I'm here to bring up the age-old topic of water here in Chatham. My husband and I both suffer from kidney failure. My husband's in three A, I'm in three B. He has one more step. I only have one step before we both go to, uh, to, uh, have our kidneys. Till we go to, um.
Are you going to dialysis?
Sorry.
Dialysis.
Dialysis, yes. Um, this is the filter from our three-month water system. Yes. And this is the one I took out today. And it's not just particles. If you touch this filter, it will turn your hands brown. Don't pass these rounds, you can see that. But they are just absolutely disgusting. We have an eighty-three-hundred-dollar water filter system from Applus. It pre-filters. This is our filter. It conditions, and it has a scuba tank about this size that helps to filter the water before it even gets to this filter here. And then it has a UV light for bacteria and viruses.
I assume these are white when you buy them?
Pardon?
Are they white when you buy them?
Yes, they are still white when we put them in. So that's a three-month and a one-month. We're supposed to change every three months. Okay, then we went to two, but I checked it today, and now they're recommending every one month because they're so bad. I've put so many posts up on Chatham Central. I have people responding to me, asking me what kind of system we have. I posted pictures, and in one picture, I'll let you see this one, on the three-month filter, we had a glob of putters putty come through our main line onto one of the filters. Now that had to come from outside the home. Somewhere, when somebody was fixing something through the water department, that big glob of putty attached itself to the water filter. So it's not just dirt. It's not just mud. This stuff is like filthy clay. It's like handling a pile of clay and feces. It's that staining on your hands, as you can see by the photo. I wiped my hand dry and still stained my hand. I just scrubbed my hand. I know you all think we don't have a problem here, but it scares me dead that all my friends and my other parts of my family that live here are still drinking this water because they can't afford an eighty-three-hundred-dollar system to put in their homes. But we had to do it because we can't afford more medical bills like we already have. And I appreciate you all trying to fix the water, but we've got to do better. Because this, I live in a home built in nineteen ninety-one. These are not old pipes. I've been under my house. I've looked at my piping system. These are not old eighty-year-old pipes. This is horrible, and something has to be done. So many people have contacted me on Facebook, on Chatham Central, and said their kids have rashes. Their family's hair is falling out. I know when we went to this system, our hair got softer. Our skin stopped drying out. Our clothes got cleaner. Everything that should have happened with good water is happening in our home. And we know that we can share that water with people who come over. They don't want to drink Chatham water unless it's been through our system. Thank you for your time, and I ask you to please do more to fix the water system. This is going to hurt people in the long run, but we had to do it for us. We couldn't do it and hurt our bodies anymore. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Any, any other additional comments? There are none. No old business. Item one under new business is a resolution recognizing the achievements of Jordan Van Cooten, United States Special Olympian and Champion. Could I please have a motion to bring this to the floor?
I'd make a motion.
Trustee Ferguson has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Try by an inch.
You try, John.
Inch, yeah.
This reads, whereas the members of the corporate authorities of the Village of Chatham are pleased to congratulate Jordan Van Cooten on the occasion of representing the state of Illinois in the two thousand twenty-two United States Special Olympics Games. And whereas Jordan, a Village of Chatham resident and Glenwood High School alum, won gold medals in the events of the one-hundred-meter walk and the four-hundred-meter walk. And whereas Jordan also earned a fifth-place finish in the javelin. And whereas Jordan is an eleven-year Special Olympic athlete and a fierce competitor, and the Village of Chatham is very proud of all of Jordan's achievements. So therefore, be it resolved by the president and board and trustees of the Village of Chatham in Sangamon County that we congratulate Mr. Jordan Van Cooten of the Illinois delegation for the United States Special Olympics Games on the occasion of his two gold medals and fifth-place finish, and wish him many more years of continued success and triumph. All in favor?
Aye.
So Jordan, if you would like, sir, we have a copy of this resolution that we just read on your behalf. And come up here, and if we could all take a picture of us, uh, with you, we would really be, be honored.
Yeah, we'd like them to put there.
Right, right up here, Jordan, right in front of us.
We'll sneak, we'll, oh, squish, squish.
All right, everybody has got their pictures. Congratulations.
Hey, Jordan!
Way to go.
You guys have no obligation to stay here for the remainder of our meeting. Yes. Rehearsed, of course. But there was fierce.
Hi, guys. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Jordan.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Second piece of business is a resolution giving the honorary designation of volunteer drive to Tracy Formia officially. Could we please have a motion for this?
I'd make a motion for it.
Trustee Ferguson has made a motion, second by trustee Charles. Uh, we did make this presentation to, uh, Tracy, was it? Two weeks ago now, just about. Um, so obviously, we all know Tracy. We all know what she's done in our community and continues to do for our community. Uh, so very proud that this sign is now up in community park where it belongs. But we do eventually need to make an official vote, so this is that point in time. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye and opposed. So moved. Item three is the twenty-twenty-three budget presentation. Kayla and Pat? You're on.
If Dan could start the slide, okay? I'm going to talk a little bit tonight about our twenty-twenty-three proposed budget. If you go to the next slide, our outline's going to cover the fund structure, the budget process, the budget goals, and the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three proposed budget overview. Our fund structures, as you can see on this slide, are numerous, but the ones I'm going to highlight tonight are the general fund, the capital projects fund, and the enterprise funds. In the budget process, we started back in February, and, uh, that's kind of started out with taking a look at, uh, what we projected in the way of income and projects that we wanted to be able to do. I talked to the mayor, and we kind of come up with a little bit of a, a guideline of where we were going to go. That then, uh, moved forward to March, where we started having meetings, uh, and getting data assembled and put together. Uh, in April, uh, those meetings started getting a little closer, and, uh, we were going back and forth between the different department heads. Police chief, he works on his budget. Vern Foley, or, um, Shane Hill works on the electric and the street department budget, and Dustin Patterson works on the water and the parks budget, okay? And Kayla holds all, all of those guys, his hands, all through the whole process and talks them off the ledge and says, no, a lot. And then when they don't listen to her, they come in, and then I tell them, no. We, we come up with kind of preliminary plans of, of where we're going to go. Then we turn around and go through it all over again, make sure that everything adds up and that we can get the things done that we wanted to be able to get done. Two big things really happened this year that really helped us out a lot. The ARPA funds that we got last year and also the park grant that we got. Uh, so those helped a ton, okay? And then, uh, the plan is in place. I met with all of yous, uh, went over that the other, this past week, week and a half, and the proposal is to pass it this evening, okay? Our goals as a village haven't really changed. Uh, we want to provide, uh, outstanding customer service to our residents and our business community and any visitors that come to our area. We provide efficient streamlined services. Since I took over as a village manager, we have tried to use technology to streamline just about every single thing that we do, from the police side to the water department, to the electric, to, to all of them. Economic development is, is huge for us, and at times, over the last couple of years, that's got a little stagnant with COVID, but it appears that within like the last month and a half, I'm starting to get those phone calls again of, hey, we're looking at Chatham to come down here. So I think things are starting to turn around. In quality of life, uh, we want a safe place for our kids to grow up and our families to live. It gets tougher and tougher with the way that the world is these days, and, uh, we try to do the best with what we've got. You know, we don't like to hear complaints on the water, but we know that in some cases there are problems. So, uh, those have been addressed, and they've been talked to at the South Sangamon Water Commission. We told them what we're seeing. We've had reports of this for months, and we're expecting them to be able to do things to take care of that. It's nothing inside of our system. It's the water that they're sending it to us. The stuff that you saw in those is manganese. It is not a harmful substance unless you eat it by the spoonful, you know? Uh, so that's where we're at on that. Uh, the proposed budget, the general fund this year, we're at nine-point-two million dollars. Capital projects fund, about one-point-five. Yard waste fund, four-hundred-and-forty. Uh, police, public works, uh, three thousand. What that is, is years ago, there was a utility tax that was on your landline phones and cable back at the time. And we used to make enough money off of that that Vern could buy a car and usually the street department could get a truck. Now you can see we're going to get three thousand from it this year, so I, I wish people go back to landline phones. The police pension fund is at one-point-one million. Uh, the cemetery perpetual care fund, that's money that when we sell graves, uh, we take the profits from that and put that into a fund to be able to help take care of the cemetery over there. Uh, we are using it to upgrade, uh, the road again this year. And then we are, I think, uh, a year or two ago, we voted to set aside, I think it's eighty percent of the funds from the selling of the graves, this profit, uh, to be able to come up with a, uh, mausoleum-type thing for cremations. We're finding that more and more folks are going with cremations these days, and instead of taking up a whole bunch of green space, we can build up and put them in walls and walkways and everything else and stuff like that. So we have a plan to move forward with that sometime in the future. The motor fuel tax fund this year is eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand dollars, and our electric fund is eleven-point-six million, and our water sewer is eight-point-six, almost eight-point-seven. Talk a little bit about those three different funds. First, we'll do the general fund. So appropriations for the general fund is greater than our estimated revenue, and that happens almost every single year. Every single year, we have projects that we hoped would complete last year, but we end up having to carry them forward into the next year. So we plan to expend that. We had the money on hand last year. So that's there as well as everyone that falls, that their salaries and stuff come from the general fund, their vacation time, personal time, sick time, all that added up is a liability on us, and we have to turn around and take account for that. So that's in there. We keep some reserve cash, uh, the following items. So what we're going to do is we're going to transfer one point, almost one-point-three million dollars into the capital projects fund. Two-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-five-hundred will be for projects, and that other million will set there for future projects. Last year, we, we moved five-hundred thousand into that, and over the year, we ended up purchasing the properties along, uh, west side of the square. We have the money. We're moving a million dollars into that. We don't have it earmarked for anything, but we want to be able to let you guys know that it's sitting there, that if you come up with projects that you think that are, are, that we need to do, there's money being in there to be able to, to use that. Administration department. That, we don't have a whole bunch of money earmarked for anything on the administrative side other than we are upgrading our Springbrook software, which we use for accounting and for billing. We've used a server version of that for years, and we're going to upgrade to a cloud version of that. So that fund or that cost is split between the admin, the, uh, the electric and the water. Some of the stuff that we were looking to spend money on in the administrative and ARPA funds, traffic signals at Gordon and Walnut Street, traffic signals at Park in Walnut Street. We've been talking about for the last few years of putting the pond in down by our shops to be able to deal with flooding in the parks and the Parkview neighborhood and also our properties down there. We're going to use the ARPA funds to be able to do, put that in. ADA accessibility to our new playground equipment. We've got all that. We've got, uh, wood chips, but we want to be able to give, get people off of the bike paths over to it, and then also from that area back up to be able to use the restrooms that, that are, they're not there right now. We're going to do another five, fifty thousand dollars worth of bike trail improvements this year. We're going to plan to replace the gazebo on the square, uh, for the last, well, ever since it got put up, we've never had heat in the, uh, building where the concessions and the bathrooms are at. So we're going to put heat in there to be able to keep those bathrooms open year-round. We're going to resurface the basketball courts, resurface the tennis courts, and the water department's going to use a little, for a couple of projects, and then those will get listed a little bit later. We have potential to get a grant from Senator McClure to, to the amount of two-hundred thousand dollars. We are proposing to use that money to clear the structures that we purchased on the west side of the square. We have a chance for the economic development grant, and that's, uh, valued at seventy-five thousand dollars. And we are risk management, risk management insurance, uh, gives us a grant, a safety grant for every year that we go without having accidents, and they're going to give us ten thousand, four-hundred-and-thirteen dollars back to be able to use towards more safety projects and stuff like that. Parks department, uh, we've got fifty thousand set in there for signs and dignification. We were not going to buy a mower this year, but, uh, two weeks ago, I got a notice from Dustin that one of our newer mowers broke, and they need to replace the engine, but they don't have the engine yet to be able to replace it. And then one of our older mowers broke, so grass kept growing, but we didn't have enough mowers to go around. So he was lucky enough to find one and had a fairly decent price, so we, we're going to purchase that. That park grant that I was talking about earlier, that's three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, and that has been a godsend to the parks. We've done so many projects with the big new piece of playground equipment out there to, uh, putting sidewalks to the pickleball courts and the tennis courts, and, uh, we're going to resurface the road out there. We've put up fencing, or we're in the process of, of putting two new diamonds down at West Park and all the fencing that goes along with those. Uh, they're redoing right now. The pavilion down at West Park and putting a brand-new roof on all that, fixing it up. So it's been, been a huge, huge help to our parks. Some, oh, a few other things. We bought the parks department a new truck last year, and, and, uh, I knew they were, they had it outfitted, but they didn't have the plow. We're going to get the plow this year for eight-thousand-five-hundred. And then the other day, we were all debating on what a bush hog was, and it evidently is a, a large plate that has blades underneath of it that you pull behind our large tractor that cuts lards, swats grass. We thought it was the kind that you kind of hand pushed, but it is, it's not the case. And an infield groomer. And the infield groomer is a piece of equipment. We have a manual infield groomer. His name's Bob Erickson, and he's done it for umpteen years. But Bob is getting tired, and one of these days, he's going to retire, and this piece of equipment can turn around and grind up the dirt, re-smooth it, spread it all out, and make it look, we could have some of the nicest diamonds in town. Well, we already have the nicest diamonds in town, so we hope to be able to keep those going. Uh, street department. They got a, a, a new bobcat last year. Well, this year, we're buying the trailer to haul the bobcat around. So I don't know. That's kind of putting the cart before the horse, but, and then, uh, we needed a new truck for the lead worker in the street. The power screen that we had in the budget from last year, we carried forward. We're going to, and that's what the other trailer is going to be used for. And then I explained in some of the meetings that we've met what letters of credit are. It's confusing when, when you first come on the board and you're like, what is a letter of credit? But what, what it is is if you're doing improvements or making a new subdivision, if you don't take care of all the product or all of the work up front, they have to bond that out, and they, and they get a letter of credit from the bank to guarantee that, that that work gets done. We've been able to go back with our attorneys, our engineer, and claim some of that money from subdivisions that have folded. We've taken care of some of the problems in those subdivisions, and we still have a couple more to take care of. But we're finding, because we're doing the work, we have money left over, and we'll be able to use that on other subdivisions as we go forward too. Police department, you want, you want to do yours? Getting dry.
Um, kind of, as I said, we kind of need to get, we've all sort, uh, you know, separate groups and stuff. Um, as you can see, what's listed down there is a flock camera system that's been there a while back, and that will definitely become in handy, especially with some of the things that go on pretty lately. As you can see, the cost there. Uh, the cameras, uh, for the cars and the computers kind of go hand-in-hand, goes with the, with the vehicles as well. Storage fee of the, of, uh, the body camera footage, um, that's a concern. It's going to continue to be a concern as far as moving forward with all the body camera footage that we will be purchasing. We'll be purchasing body cameras this year, this next year, January, February twenty-three. The knowledge sheet is full of that information. Um, the other concern with that is what we request and can go along with that as well. Uh, once referred to water tire, this will be kind of worked hand-in-hand with SEMA. What will happen is, uh, that's our backup repeater, but SEMA currently operates off of that, off that now. We currently operate off the STARCOM radio system, which is different than what this repeater is, but is our backup radio system. We use our own, it's down. But at the current time, SEMA currently uses that, uh, that radio system as well in the building. So it kind of helps everyone out, uh, together. Replace the ten VHF radios. That goes along with the same thing. It'll help SEMA as well. We'll, uh, reissue the, the current radios. We have it right now. We'll reissue those to SEMA volunteers, and if we ever have some type of disaster, they must have a radio. Plan in the future, moving forward, is make sure every village worker has a radio in their hand in case we do have some type of issue. That's, that's, right now, they're only, pretty much only the vehicles that, that are owned by the village, not necessarily portable radios. So the plan is moving forward to get portable radios in everyone's hands, for communication purposes. Uh, the body cameras, um, not sure what it says twenty, but we, we currently have, uh, sixteen officers, that includes me. So, uh, there'll be sixteen body cameras that will be purchased, like I said, probably March, April of next year. When it comes to the capital projects, um, kind of, kind of alluded to, the fact is that, uh, out of the ARPA funds, we did not ask for any money to go through the ARPA funds. Actually, just kind of moved to the capital projects fund. So under the projects fund, we're asking for three squad cars. That's to replace existing fleet. Uh, currently, right now, we've got, uh, I believe, uh, five squad cars. Currently, right now, we've got, I believe, five squad cars over 10,000 miles on them. We're just trying to keep the fleet as young as possible. By allowing purchase, you know, purchase three squad cars, what will happen essentially is I'll be able to get to where all my vehicles are probably under, all the vehicles under 100,000 miles, drive it about 10 years, drive it home after 10 years, if possible, keep the fleet as good as possible. The equipment obviously goes with the squad cars, lights, sirens, all that good stuff, cameras, in-car computers. Now, that all kind of goes hand-in-hand, and it's kind of expensive to outfit a car, as you can see. The grants, we did, we are in the running for a grant for a K-9 grant, which will be, as you can see, $9,000. Hopefully, we receive that grant. We have not got the actual word yet. I think we're pretty in shape for that. Obviously, we're not going to spend any money if we don't receive the grant, but if we do receive the grant, maybe we used it and spent on the K-9 and such. We also applied for a BLOBRE Best grant as well. That's obviously to outfit all of our officers, any new officers we bring on within the department, which plan, hopefully this year, is to add one additional officer here in the next couple of months, and then a lot of that officer will, with the best. But we did receive a grant for that. Body camera grants, as I spoke to most of yous already, we received a grant. I applied for the grant this past year, which the body cameras are covering around $20,000. We did receive a grant for just half that amount, $8,000, almost $10,000, so we did receive a grant for the body cams. So I feel it'd be wise to make the purchase of the body cams as opposed to returning money for the grant. So we will be implementing that, like I said, in March, April.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you, sir.
Aaron. The last two funds are the water sewer and then the electric. We're going to talk about the water and sewer first. We're upgrading our meter reading system, our electronic win. We had to add on to it a little bit. So the cost of that is $30,000, and it'll get split equally between the electric and the water department. You know, most of you guys were here when we talked about the VAXD or the last time, that lease that we had, the five-year lease was up, and that they offered to pay off the balloon payment to get that back because we kept such, we did such a good job of keeping it in good shape. We realized that two vehicles, two different vehicles would do a better job for us than the one. So that's what the board approached and Dustin, and I think you guys gave your blessing on that. Luckily, that won't be till the later part of this year, when both of those items come in. Till then, they've allowed us to lease the one that we had for about $750 a month, which is a huge savings to us. So we're on that, and there's two things that we put in the ARPA funds for the water department. Out at our ground storage tank, the electricity is supplied by CWLP, and they do a great job, but every once in a while, because it's a long line that runs there, they lose power. And when they lose power, our pumps can't work out there. So we're going to put a generator out there, a gas-fired generator, to be able to be an emergency backup. And then the same thing at the elevated tank. The hardware and all the skate equipment that's inside of it is currently on small little battery backups and surge compressors. The idea is to put one there, also smaller size, to be able to carry it during those times that we have a power outage. I missed the sheet on the electric. We'll go back to the electric because it's not in my slide. In the electric one, purchasing a $30,000, roughly $30,000 for a pickup truck for locator, the one that needs to be driven now, spends more time at checkpoint than it does in our, on our streets. They need a trailer, so they're also get $123,000. Talked about the split here, and one of the things that Shane does, and it's money well spent, is tree trimming. We still have some above-ground lines, even though a lot of the main lines run underground, they still run over. And if you live in the older neighborhoods and stuff where you were always fed from above, you still are. So you'll have the transformers and the pedestals on the ground, but the feet will come out, go up to the top of the pole, and then go directly to one or two houses. So that way, if a branch falls or something like that, only one or two people are out instead of a whole neighborhood. So as we go through some of those areas, and before we get those areas buried underground, we go behind all those houses and turn around and hire companies to come in and top the trees so that they don't grow up into those lines. So we still have outages. In that last storm we had, there was probably, I think, a total of five, but they weren't widespread. They were just individual here and an individual there and stuff. So it's always going to be that way. You're never going to be able to get everybody's below ground. But in all the new subdivisions, everything is put in underground, but in some of the older areas, it still comes in from the top. The last part is the yard waste and recycling refuge program. It's always been in pretty good shape. We do have a good cash flow in it, but we are paying off a loan for the new street sweeper, and it pays for one employee to be in the street sweeper all day long and working throughout the town. The unknown that's on that is the contract that we had for the branches and for the leaf pickup expired, expires at the end of June, and I have bids out for, I'm having a pre-bid meeting Friday, and then the bids are supposed to be in on July the 8th. So then I'll be able to come back to you and tell you where we're at cost-wise and give you some options on what we can do going forward. But we put in there what we had in there last year, plus, you know, percentage increase to be able to cover it. Cemetery, kind of the same thing. I talked earlier, we're going to spend about $78,000 trying to upgrade the roads in the cemetery, and then also, going forward, we're going to take 80% and use that to go in to build up a fund to construct a mausoleum. And the motor fuel tax, Jim and the guys at CMT help us manage that every year. We've always experienced good growth in that as our population increases, the numbers that we get in that fund increase. We were able to do another big patch of Oakbrook last year. We didn't use the MFT funds on that. We ended up using that bond money that we had, but this year, we're going to do overlay Gordon Drive from just a little bit south of Oakbrook Avenue, all the way down through the intersection at Walnut. That'll be, what, grind and overlay? Then we have a separate outside contract, the total of $84,750, with the idea of spending that on repairs between Route 4 and Polcat Creek Bridge on Plummer Boulevard by both of the medical clinics there. That asphalt is pulling apart, and it's, when you drive down there, it's, the tire lanes are almost in ruts. The goal is to turn around and dig all those out and redo them and fill those in, patch them, and get them so that next year or the year after that, when we use the Build America Bonds money, we can come in, grind, and then resurface from Polcat Creek Bridge all the way to Carmigan. And that'll be huge. That'll, that's kind of our business district right now, so that'll be all brand-new, all resurfaced, all striped new. And that's it. So if you have any questions, me, Kayla, Vern, we'll do our best to answer them.
Do I have any questions for?
Pat, I got one question about the water department and the water and sewer fund. It looks like we have a deficiency in the amount of money that we should be carrying in that fund. What can we do to get that back on track?
We're going to review how much money we take income every single month, and the same with our spending, and make sure that we're still ahead. We are pushing all of our purchases of any equipment to the later part of that fiscal year, and we still have $1.1 million of cash on hand as a reserve, and the accrued benefits that I was telling you about, you know, I have a very young crew in the water department. I don't expect a lot of them. For one thing, they have not accumulated a lot of time, and I don't expect them to turn around and be leaving.
I would think last year, we had a much higher deficiency in there last year, right? So we've actually come up from last year.
We did. The thing that kind of went sour on us was COVID year. We sold more water than we ever expected to. And then when we projected the revenues for the following year, we projected it with a 3% increase, and then we didn't, we didn't meet expectations. So one year, we made a lot of money, and the next year, we missed that expectation. So our evaluation of where we should be, we went back to the normal graph that comes through there and took that one spike out. I think we'll be okay. I really do. But we will watch it each month. Kayla will on one side, and Dustin will on the other on the sales and stuff. And if we have to do any adjustments during that, we will. But I'm not planning a rate increase, no.
That's important to the community.
Well, it's important to me, too, because I have not had to raise the water for our part of it since I got here, and the only increases we saw were coming from the plant. And I need the plant to do some things, and I hope they take care of what they're supposed to do. We have stressed it to our commissioner, the chairman out there, even New Berlin is seeing the same problem with the manganese, and they're upset, too. So the guy at the plant is supposed to be changing some stuff and getting some things taken care of, and we will monitor that, and we'll keep yous informed of what's going on. Okay?
Thank you.
Anyone else? All good? All right. Definitely do want to, Kayla, I know this is your first trip all the way through. So we certainly appreciate what you do because we know what it takes to keep the rest of the budget team in line throughout the whole process through it, so.
You would never know that it was the first time for. So that's, does a really, really good job.
That's what we heard all the way through, too, as well. So certainly appreciate the effort, and we know it takes a lot of time and a lot of energy from all of our departments to get to the spot where we're at, and it takes a lot of significant management all the way through the year. So you guys are certainly appreciative for what you've put together here and what you've been able to accumulate and accomplish over the years. So with no further questions, we'll take a pause in the board meeting and convene a public hearing regarding the proposed annual appropriation ordinance for the village of Chatham for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2022, and ending April 30, 2023. This includes the proposed total appropriation for the village for all funds at $33,490,359. At this point in time, because it's a public hearing, if anybody would like to comment regarding the budget, this is the opportunity to make those comments. So would anybody like to present testimony or comment regarding the budget?
I am Rogers, 400 West Mulberry Street, Chatham. At the time, the dog park was opened in May, there was mention of assembling or erecting shelters in the dog park for the purposes of shade, because only the large dog park on the right-hand side has one tree, and there is no other shade in that area. Is there a plan in the Parks Department for allowances to erect shelters at this time or the next year?
So we don't have a specific call-out for?
For that.
For that. What they're working on right now is rehabilitation on the big pavilion that is in there. The actual dog park and all that fencing and everything, that has been driven by a fundraising, yes, and a charitable foundation that's steering that. And I think some of your recollection of where you heard things probably came from their planning and what they're trying to accomplish as they continue to raise funds and support that endeavor.
A second comment would be to the water situation. I disagree with Mr. McCarthy in the claim that it's a manganese problem with the water. I know in our own home, we had the water tested, and our dissolved solids went from 548 to 215 after the installation of our water cleaner, and our pH went from 9.6 to 722. So that should be, it's not manganese. Thank you.
Anyone else regarding the budget? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and reconvene our board meeting with item five, which is an ordinance making appropriations for all corporate purposes for the fiscal year commencing on the first day of May, 2022, and ending the 30th day of April, 23. Have a motion to bring this to the floor, please.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Nice has made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Fletcher. Any further discussion regarding the appropriation ordinance? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, would you take the vote?
Trustee Nice.
Yes.
Trustee Tri.
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Fletcher.
Yes.
Item six is an ordinance approving the plot of vacation of Oakbrook Estates subdivision, plot number 16, and part of Lot 1001. Could I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Charo has made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Tri. Attorney Mortak, you want to give the layman's?
So this is the property we've been discussing at the corner of Plummer and Ravina. Lot 221, when we received the deed in 2005, and the same with Lot 1001. The deed conveyed the property to us in fee simple, but it also referred to the property as Chatham Parkland, and there's no reservation or restriction of right as to our use of the property, but the fact that it was designated as parkland, and we're looking to use this, not for parkland, but in fact, convey it to a buyer, that we need to vacate that parkland. The county, when it recorded the deed, it noted that this had, that this was Chatham Parkland, and so that appears in the county records as well. So this is a step that we need to take to clear up the deed in order for us to be able to convey the property in fee simple, should we sell it.
And this is just a little track of?
So up there, the shaded section is just the small section. All the rest that would be kind of south and to the west of the shaded section?
Yep.
That's the whole of Lot 1001. It continues all the way down to the creek.
Yep.
Further?
I will just put, you know, my vote's going to be based on, I would like to see the variance asked for without that piece of land being included, and we all know my reasons, so that's where I'm at. So I didn't want anybody to be surprised by how I'm.
Mr. Clerk.
Okay. Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Trustee Fletcher.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
No.
Trustee Nice.
Yes.
Trustee Tri.
Yes.
Item seven is an ordinance amending the village liquor code to create a new classification of liquor license for an extraterritorial establishments subject to a village's annexation agreement. Could I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
I'll make.
When do you finish?
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion.
Trustee Nice has made a motion. Do I have a second by trustee Charo? Layman again?
Okay. So this is creating an entirely new license.
Category.
Category of licenses in the village. So as you know, the village has created different types of licenses for different establishments to sell alcohol. We are allowed to regulate the sale of alcohol at a local level. In 2018, the establishment now known as Lucky Moon Saloon, down south of the village, they applied for a liquor license. I think it was selling furniture at the time. They wanted to sell alcohol as well. At that time, we went into discussions with the county about jurisdiction. That particular parcel is under a pre-annexation with the village. So if we ever become contiguous to that parcel, they will annex into the village. There is a provision of the municipal code that discusses the rights and rules and responsibilities of a parcel under a pre-annexation agreement. In our discussion with the county in 2018, the county wanted us to handle the building permitting process and the zoning process. And the county then handled the liquor license issuance. So from 2018 to the present day, that parcel operated under Village of Chatham zoning, even though it's not within the village because it might one day be within the village and is under that annexation agreement. But it was operating with a liquor license from the county. That liquor, that property is pending sale at the moment or there was a sale contemplated in the county because a liquor license goes with the individual, not with the property. The county in 2022 said that they were not going to renew the license. It went to the county liquor commission and they said that they did not believe that they had jurisdiction to issue it. The law didn't change, but the county's position and interpretation of the law did. So they're no longer issuing that license. They have been very clear. Counsel, the state's attorney has sent me correspondence that says, we're not issuing that license. They determined that at a meeting. The reasoning is under, under section 1.5-2.1 of the municipal code, which deals with annexation agreements. The phrase that a property is, quote, "subject to the ordinance's control and jurisdiction of the annexing municipality" applies to everything, including licensing, which expands the right of the property, which is different from the position that we took in 2018. So with them not issuing that, we, and their position is the village has the right to issue this license. What this does is it creates an entirely new license that the village can issue. This license can only be issued to properties that are within, that are under a pre-annexation agreement within 1.5 miles of the village and have already received and operated or been operating under a county liquor license. So the Lucky Moon Saloon hits those three points, so it would be an eligible property at the time, should this be created. What's unique about this license is, oh, the pre-annexation agreement, actually, let me pause. The pre-annexation agreement needs to have at least 10 years remaining. So the pre-annexation agreement would need to be renewed. For those of you new to the board, pre-annexation agreements by statute can only last 20 years. So when we get, we just renewed a bunch two months ago. Those are all on a 20-year renewal. This one would need to be renewed, so it has at least that minimum 10-year remaining. The annual fee for the license is fixed at, and I'll get into this reasoning, is fixed at $1,000. And then also the, there's a variable component to that fee, which is the video gaming tax, tax for distribution for the municipal share for the preceding calendar year as reported by the Illinois Gaming Board. So the Illinois Gaming Board puts out a report, a county-wide report of every establishment, what their terminals are making and breaks down the tax allocation. We have in this, in the fee structure here, that municipal portion would be a part of the fee that's required for this license. That fee is waived if the village receives that municipal, that municipal revenue. And here's why it's structured that way. That question has not yet been determined in Illinois as to where the video gaming revenue comes to. There's a 1997 opinion from the attorney general that a property under a sales tax or under a pre-annexation agreement, the sales tax revenue from that should go to the municipality. But that has not been extended yet because nobody's asked the question for gaming. So what we're, what we will do as a village is if this is passed, we will work with the county and ask that we enter into an intergovernmental agreement to allow that video gaming revenue to come to the licensing body, which would be the village. If that happens, then that variable component of the fee is waived. So we've termed it an ETG license or we're creating an ETG license, which is the same as a tavern gaming license, but it's extraterritorial.
Clear as mud for? Anybody having questions for Greg on what he's?
Do we have a, I mean, is this the only one that we have in this situation?
This is the only property that will qualify under the, under the three criteria listed for the license.
If you look the next ordinance, you vote to create the license or to issue the license, or no, create the license. This is just to create the category.
Yeah. I was just wondering how many was out there that we might be able to help.
Well, and I was on the board and the mayor was on the board when this, the original individual came before us. And he was very accommodating. He kept his sign low. He did everything we asked. And you don't really see it as in the village. Like I vowed to not create or vote for any new gaming licenses unless, you know, there's special circumstances. I think this is a special circumstance. It already exists. They're already selling liquor. In essence, if we vote no, we'd be closing a business down, which I don't think we want to do.
Further discussion? Mr. Clerk?
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Nice.
Yes.
Trustee Tri.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Trustee Fletcher.
Yes.
All right, now item eight, having created a new category of license, we need a separate vote to amend the village code to add one available class ETG liquor license that pending all appropriate applications and background checks would be available to issue. So have a motion. Trustee Ferguson made a motion. Second by trustee Fletcher. Any discussion?
Thank you for doing business in Chatham.
Thank you for sticking it out.
And that's what we're, and we should use the help to make sure that that's what's happening. So if what you're stating is exactly what happens, that variable component.
Yep.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item number nine is an ordinance approving a bid for the village basketball court curb. Motion to bring this to the floor.
Make that motion.
Trustee Gerger's made a motion. Do I have a second? Second by trustee Tri. This is a accepting a bid by Earthworks Solutions in the amount of $47,224 for the curbing work around basketball courts and Chase Park. Any discussion?
I would just would like for ex-trustee debtors to be banned from the courts because it's not.
If we put curb on him, it exceeds his vertical leaning ability, so.
All right, so the curb is good.
Curb is good.
Mr. Clerk, would you take this?
So I just want to make sure Gerger was the first and Tri second?
Yes.
Okay, great. Trustee Tri.
Yes.
Trustee Nice.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Fletcher.
Yes.
Item 10 is an ordinance approving a bid for village sidewalk improvements. Have a motion, please.
I'll make a question.
I'll second.
Trustee Charo's made a motion. Second by trustee Gerger. This authorizes the approval of a bid amount from McKinney Contractors, $84,374 for various sidewalks improvements. Any discussion?
I just want to say, reading through it as a new trustee, I love the details on the spreadsheets, so loved it.
Thank you for your help.
We try extra hard when it's grant money because we have to turn it all into.
Mr. Clerk, would you take the roll, please?
Trustee Fletcher.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Tri.
Yes.
Trustee Nice.
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
All right, entertain a motion to bring the consent agenda to the floor.
Make the motion.
Trustee Ferguson's made a motion. Do I have a second? Second by trustee Nice. Any discussion regarding the warrants or the minutes? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk?
Trustee Nice.
Yes.
Trustee Tri.
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Fletcher.
Yes.
Any additional public comments on any village business? Hearing none, scheduled meetings as follows. Entertain a no-close session. Entertain a motion to adjourn the board meeting.
Make a motion.
Trustee Ferguson's made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Charo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Board meeting stands adjourned.
One hour on the money.
So the committee, Mr. Clerk, would you call, as soon as we don't have, currently have a chair or a vice chair of the committee, is it okay if the clerk calls your meeting in order?
Sure.
And calls for the first action?
Your vice chair, then.
I'd like to call the committee, the hold to order. Time is 7 o'clock. I will turn it over to you.
Call that first action. Call item two on your agenda there.
I'm grabbing that agenda.
An action item, selecting a chair and vice chair for the committee of the hold.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to appoint trustee Charo as the chair.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, I need to make a motion to select a vice chair. And so I make a motion or I nominate trustee Ferguson.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye, and all in favor?
You're asking now.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay, little bumpy start. I got this.
You're good.
Motion for reconsideration?
No.
Kidding.
No, I can't vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any opposed?
No.
All right. Thank you. So I call the meeting to order now. I meant, we're in roll call. Do we do roll call? We skip all this?
You can call a roll. Do you have the roll, Mr. Clerk?
Trustee Nice. Trustee Tri. Trustee Ferguson.
Present.
Trustee Charo.
Present.
Trustee Gerger.
Present.
Trustee Fletcher.
Here.
Vice president, or village president Kimsey.
Alrighty, so ordering public comments on the agenda topics. Hearing none. We move to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to bring the consent agenda to the table? I'll make a motion. Any discussion? All right, no old business. Oh, we have to take a vote. All those in favor of the consent agenda? No old business. We have new business. We have the CMT engineering updates.
So I had a question from a resident and I didn't know the answer. And I figured you'd be here tonight, so I'd ask you. When we did the grading, you know, we put them all on their levels a couple of years ago where we graded all the streets. So when they should, you know, come up. Have we done it to the annexed properties? So like Sweetbrier and then the old Glenwood Lake, or the, not the old, they're still there, the Glenwood Lake Estates.
So probably not in there.
Okay.
We do have that online. Pat can provide you a copy with the link online. You can take a look at that and give a rating to those roadways as well.
If we could add them, that would be great.
Sure, we will. And, you know, once again, the purpose of that was to identify what the condition of the roadways were and help prioritize the roadways. And kind of our running approach with this is, what this rating system is, you put the money towards the roadways that haven't fallen apart completely and you can bring them back up. So it's a 1 to 10 rating. If you put money towards something that's at a 6 or a 7, what ends up happening is it's much cheaper to bring a 6 or a 7 back up to, you know, 8, 9, 10 than it is to let it go all the way down to a 0 and then have to completely replace the roadway. Priorities also towards the main thoroughfares in town as well. So, you know, higher A to T is higher usage. We're also taking a look at some of the smaller usage roadways as well, cul-de-sacs, you know, loop roads that are fully built out and working with Pat and some contractors here locally to look at alternative, cheaper methods to repair those roadways because we don't have the money to fix everything. And to say, take a roadway that, you know, has fallen apart, that surfaces 25 houses on a cul-de-sac and say we can put $750,000 to that single roadway for 25 residences, it's a tough sell. So we're looking at the biggest impact, the biggest bang for the buck. It's a tough sell. So we're looking at the biggest impact, the big spend for the buck, spread the money around as much as possible. But if we can take that cul-de-sac and maybe do a cheaper option, looking at that cul-de-sac and saying, hey, all these houses are built out. There's no more construction traffic on it. There's no more concrete trucks. There's no more trucks, trucks. There's no more contractor trucks. You know, you have the weekly garbage truck and it's residential vehicles. That's about it. So we can look at maybe a lesser roadway structure that can accommodate those features as well. So we are neglecting the, what we would call is the worst of the worst, but, you know, we're looking at the priorities. So, you know, focusing on the bigger usage roadways, but then also trying to take off some of these smaller ones. But yes, we will.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, I'll go through my list here, you know, once again to provide, you know, any questions or comments that anyone has related to these projects. You know, one of the big things that you guys are seeing here recently are the purse projects, $350,000 grant that got split into five different projects. First one, playground through volunteer work. You know, that has been successfully installed and moved forward. We're also starting out on the pavilion at the, it's West Park or Westside Park, and that's underway as well. Fencing for the ball dimes at Westside Park. That, contracts are being signed to get that moved forward. The basketball, basketball court curving, that's almost as hard to say as Trustee Tri. We can do that. So, what that is, is anticipation of the overlay on the courts, holding that edge of that asphalt service together. That, you guys voted on, will be less. And that one was kind of a unique project. Have you some data on that? You know, we ended up having to go with the, a DB contractor associated with that. We did receive a lower bid, but he was not a qualified bidder for that project. So, as part of the grant money, free money isn't always free. And there are stipulations and strings associated with that. So, part of that had to be awarded a percentage to a BEP certified contractor. So, that ended up going to our works. And then the final one is the miscellaneous sidewalk. That's all sidewalk projects within the parks associated with that. And contracts will be sent out tomorrow to get signed. We'll see that work start soon. Other work that we have going on is MFT work, motor fuel tax work, money that the village receives from the state to repair roadways from the gas tanks. A big project this year is going to be Gordon Drive. That will be, as Pat said, from Oak Park, right nearby Pleasant Park Nursery, south through the intersection of Walnut. We added the intersection through there. Trustees said they don't like hitting that curb and going over that. Is it a ramp or curb? I thought that was like Duke's a hazard material.
It's a jump.
It's a jump.
We go that way every night. We go that way every night.
I was gonna ask that question, actually.
I mean, really what the issue is, is Walnut goes through like a crown of thorns. Yes. And then the roadways tying into it over the south, tying at that point, so you have that breakover, breakover, breakover.
And I'm sick of hearing Trustee Fletcher go, yee-haw! Every time.
It's my cowboy hat that keeps flying out the window, though. Never flood.
I'll say this lightly, but I promise you we're gonna fix that.
All right. Thank you.
One way or another.
Because we also never want to hear you do that.
The engineering plans are done. Those are for IDOC to review and approval. And once we get those, then it'll be put out a letting and we'll advertise and let that project.
Do they let it in in July?
In July?
Does IDOC, or when does IDOC?
It's on the contractor's bulletin, so that's every two weeks. So, as soon as we get the plans approved, which is a slow process, sense of frustration. So as soon as we get the approval on that, that'll be listed in the contractor's bulletin and have to do two successive advertisements on that. And then we get a work project.
Or a month after approval is what we have against.
Right when school starts.
Probably.
Great.
Just because you're worth the contract doesn't mean the work's gonna start immediately.
Yeah, you know that, no.
I mean, we can push it off until.
Nope, nope, nope.
The, the second one is, that we will be doing under MFT, larger project, as Pat mentioned, is Plumber Boulevard. And that's gonna be significant patching from pretty much where the Walgreens entrance is, all the way to the bridge at Polk Creek. And patching all the bad areas in there. And the reason for that is, we are getting that roadway set for a, what's called a functional play. We have some rebuild Illinois money that expires in 2024. And the intent is that we're gonna mill and overlay everything from Plumber Boulevard, everything from Tarmigan, all the way to the bridge at Polk Creek. So, patch the roadway first, then we mill and overlay.
Have we shared that with the businesses, so they are at least excited a little bit?
We've been, we've been teasing it.
Yeah.
When, when you voted tonight, they gave us the go-ahead.
Yeah, to tell them.
So, anybody that has driven that road on a regular basis has learned to drive serpentine. You go over here, then you go over here, then you go over there, and you go over there. So for, for the newer trustees that haven't seen it, if you go to the other side of Route 4 on Tarmigan, these two, when you talk about reinforcement, these are those concrete cuts that you have seen gone in there. They rebuilds the integrity of the road underneath, so that when they go back over the top, you know, the problems that are around these, that.
Got it.
Are still there. They're reinforced from the bottom and they could be tough.
Is there any issue or plans to look at the runoff, rain runoff? Because I know, I know it does this, right? I mean, that road does go up and down. Anything from a drainage standpoint, the road?
So the curbs and everything are good in there. And what happens is, you know, a lot of that is settlement trenches or, you know, old utility trenches and stuff where everything is settled down. Or is actually the pavement is pulling apart. As traffic continues to go over it, it keeps curling the ends and that joint keeps opening further. So we're cutting out those joints, restoring that back to the original grade. And then when we mill and overlay, we'll restore the crown of the roadway with the mill and overlay project. Other miscellaneous things that we've been working on, you know, the parcel at Ravinia, or Ravinia pulling together, you know, the plask and, you know, working with the village council on that to get those documents moved forward. As Pat mentioned, you know, talking with several developers and projects in town here moving forward. So, working on some engineering details associated with those and hopefully get that moved forward in positive light. Let's see, looking, and, and then the, the other big one that's coming up is, you know, the PR funds in terms of pulling together plans and bidding documents associated with that, the pond project. And then, you know, other, like path improvements and so forth, working with village staff to get those out on the street that.
And do, do we anticipate that the pond tra, project will alleviate that flooding from those residents in that area?
Yes. What will happen is, we did some preliminary studies and design associated with the pond. And what we're gonna do is capture the rainfall that kind of goes in that area. Collect it in a detention base and that will also serve as a recreational facility as well. So, that pond feature will knock the peak off of the runoff and downsize it to the size of the pipes that are currently there that run down and along, you know, South Park.
Yeah.
Over to the, over to the box. So, what we will see is a lesser amount of water over a longer period of time.
Good.
So it will knock that peak off and alleviate, I promise everything.
Right.
Alleviate the storms that we've been seeing here recently, running through that neighborhood, flooding the streets, going all the way through and running out the roadway.
Right.
For Parkview subdivision, back out to South Park. So.
Great.
But the intent of that project is to get the basic infrastructure in there. We'll see where the bids come in. It is highly variable. Price that we had in there was like $480,000. Ideally, we would be looking for someone that needs that amount of dirt. Now, someone that needs that amount of dirt, they'd be willing to take that for free or almost pay for it. So, it's kind of finding that, that contractor or whatever that.
Sweet spot.
Need to dig a hole, but we also need somewhere, somewhere lots of dirt. So, if that can happen, the economy of a project like that might, you know, be much better.
I think.
What he's saying is, how do your kids feel about sledding?
I think, I think Dewey will take. I think Dewey would take.
I kinda wouldn't fill him.
Piper Glen, yeah.
They have a big pond over there in that.
Yeah, if you could fill that pond in.
What kind of timeframe are you expecting for the pond?
What we'll have to do.
All part.
What we'll have to do is pull together more detailed engineering plans. We'll present that to Pat and the board for, you know, review and approval. Work with the Massey-Massey that pulled together the concrete has to plan in terms of, we want to set it up for the proper aesthetics and the proper future use. I mean, engineer, I can do a nice square pond, really, but, you know, everyone wants all these like lima beach shaped ones.
We're kinda picky, you know?
I know, so.
We like it to look nice.
That's a big enough project that the odds of it getting done in this fiscal year.
I just feel like yours.
Probably not likely.
Jim, is that gonna take permitting, too?
Permit, we will have NPDS permits, so erosion control permits from IDPA. But, you know, any other permit from, you know, the drainage areas less than a square mile, you know, there's no IDNR requirements associated with OALR with that project. So, you know, the bulk of it is just gonna be, you know, the village itself. Also being the fact that the funding type is controlled by the village itself and isn't, doesn't have to go through a secondary approval process. It's kind of one of those projects that's in your hands. You guys decide what you want. So we'll work through with Massey-Massey. We'll come up with final engineering plans. That'll probably happen, you know, towards the end of this year in terms of finalizing that. Get the bids out here early winter and then, you know, maybe we let it, you know, see how it works. I mean, it could start in winter, which is a good time.
Right.
Spring, obviously no, because of the.
Flooding, yeah.
So, best case, this winter. Probably more likely next summer.
Okay.
In terms of construction start.
Are you still, are you also working on the gazebo at the park? The gazebo? Okay.
We're, we're gonna look to get a kit for that.
Okay.
Instead of just straight construction.
Okay.
We'll find something.
Okay.
I've been looking already online and stuff.
All right, that's all I had. Any questions?
Any more discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Pat, you need this up?
Village manager update.
I had three items for you guys to talk about tonight. Bits specs are, are out for the branch pickup as well as the leaf pickup. I pulled a pre-bid meeting in here Friday, July the 1st, 1:00. For anybody that wants to bid those, if they have any questions on how the specs will put together. And then they're supposed to halt in by the 8th of July. The, both, the people that, that did it last year, I think the bag pickup went absolutely great. We didn't have any problems with waste management. I think once National Tree got their, kind of what speed and what to expect and stuff, because it was, it was completely new to them. I think they've done a really good job, especially the last year. The thing that we didn't do over those years is we had to pay extra for cleaning up the dump area. We had to pay extra for if we cut trees down in the park and it comes through there, then pay extra if it was in a partial area. Because we wrote the specs, said it was only gonna go to pick up the residential houses. I wrote this, that if you see a tree, branch in the village chat, and if it's smaller than eight inches in diameter and six feet long, they're gonna be required to pick it up, no matter where it's at. One of the things that my staff and police department and myself would ask you to do is to close the dump area. It is a nightmare to try to keep up. People have been bringing old lawn mowers and dropping them down there. Anything that they can get out of their house and throw in the back of their truck, they put brush over the top and when they hit on them, they're not load, that's, that's there. If we're gonna put a pond there and make it a nice scenic area, I don't think it should be a dump. And I think we did get the word out that, hey, from now on, if you cut around branches and you don't want to wait for them to come around and pick them up in front of your house, you're gonna have to drive them into Springfield and take them to the dump yourself. But don't bring them down to our stuff. That would be on my recommendation. And once we get the bids, we'll take a look at them. But I would hope that you guys would consider that, because it has been a total nightmare. We probably spent an additional $50,000 to $60,000 just having them pick up branches down there. Where they could have been picked up for nothing if the people left them in front of their house, but they didn't want to do that. So. That's why I put you on that. The next one is a review of a location and a preliminary plan for Hands Point subdivision. And Hands Point subdivision is just south of, what is that? Baptist Church, no.
Presbyterian.
Presbyterian Church.
East of.
Yeah. Just east of it. The proposal is, they bought a piece of the church property. They want to put three lots facing out towards, now there's the map.
Walnut?
Three lots facing out towards Walnut and a fourth one over here off of Bolden Green. All the utilities are pretty much there. Their biggest expense will be trying to get sanitary, into a sanitary area. So, their engineers have looked at that. There's an existing driveway right about here. That'll be used for Lot 1. We haven't gotten into the construction part yet, but we will make them locate where the driveway is for 2 and 3. This starts to drop off a bit here. So, we're not sure. It may have to share an entrance and then split off the driveway there. And one of the other things that the planning commission looked at, considered, if you bought both of these lots, you should put the front of the house here, but have this come in and access a garage. Or if someone had a large mobile home, since this is all wood here, you can park the mobile home over here and have your garage back there at the back. For people that are looking for large lots to be able to store their mobile home on, that's probably an ideal situation there. But, I need, I need the board to make a motion and second for you guys to review this at the, or vote on it at the next board meeting.
So the driveways of those are gonna come out into Walnut, right?
Really? Right now, through the plan is, three of them are, yes.
Okay, so very heavy traffic.
I'm sorry.
One's already there.
One's already there. The driveway that goes into the church parking lot.
Okay.
Is being sold in that.
Okay.
And the planning commission has approved?
They've approved what you see there. That's all they've seen.
And then also.
Next steps go to our engineer and he reviews all the construction drawings. And then we move forward on that. Once they get that done, then they prepare a final plat. And then when we think all the work is done and everything is taken care of, you guys approve the plat and then they could start selling.
Is Lot, Lot 3 where they've been doing a ton of brushwork?
They have.
Okay, I, yeah.
All right, so.
Yeah, preparing for something.
I'll need a motion to move this to the next agenda.
I'll make that.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who was the second on that?
Trustee Ferguson.
Sorry.
We're gonna uncall any of the trustees.
It's okay.
This man, uh, sir. Which one do you need? Oil and chip locations. Right here? No. No. No?
It was, it.
No, it was back. That was just the list. I'm sorry. It is that one? Yeah.
Yeah.
These are all the different locations that we're gonna do oil and chip. There's not a map? On the roads, no. Okay. If you guys wanna look through there, or if anybody in the public wants to take a look and see if we're gonna be oiling the chip in their street, it's on there. And roughly when we try, we're gonna try to get into that area. And I, and I wanted to thank the staff for all their help on the budget. It, it is a task every single year and they did a good job.
I agree.
We appreciate the opportunity to ask questions, too.
Sure.
That was very, that was nice to be able to answer and ask those questions.
I enjoy having you guys come to my office and, and we go over that stuff and, and, because for some reasons, it's the first time. Some of you guys have done it year after year after year, you know? But always feel free to be able to ask questions and I'll do my best to answer them, or if I can't, the staff can. Yes, thank you. It's, it's extensive, so I appreciate all of you guys doing all the hard work. Tim looked at the book that Sherry put.
It's, it's pretty impressive.
300 and some pages.
Yeah, it's pretty impressive.
And.
I made it to page 67.
We, we'll have something similar, but not quite as of extensive, extensive. But I think Kayla will use it as a challenge to be able to see if she can do meter, meter mentor.
Well, she did a great job this year.
She did, she did.
Any further discussion? Are you done? Was that it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, fireworks are, fireworks are.
Fireworks.
Are Saturday night, the 2nd of July, okay, at the park at roughly 9:30.
Yes, we have the fireworks on Saturday and then we have the reading of the Declaration of Independence on the actual 4th. So we have like two celebrations.
This is different. We've always had fireworks on the 4th, but they, they had two guys that could shoot fireworks off and one of them retired, so they have not replaced them yet, so.
All right. Any further discussion? Next item, the Public Property and Recreation Committee. What's going on with that one?
You guys haven't met either. There was no meeting.
Have you been to a meeting yet for a moment then?
No, I have not.
So it hasn't come up to schedule yet.
I think third next, 3rd July, 20 days.
July 16th, 11th.
11th.
Says under July 11th.
Yeah, July 11th.
Yeah, it's come up.
And then Utility Oversight did not meet?
No, we will have a meeting in August where we will, I think we're gonna have a leak adjustment.
Yeah.
Come before us and then if, if we could get an update from SSWC, what they're gonna do to, to mitigate the manganese and whatever they're producing out there.
Bill Brown, JD and Dustin went out and had talked with Stephen, and I think the manager from De World was also there.
Is Stephen the one that came before us and, okay, yeah, if we could get an update, that'd be great. Be nice for the utility, new utility members to meet Stephen if he wants to come by.
August?
August, August. If we could just get an up, if we could just get an update from him, that'd be.
Be excellent, be great.
I toured it when I was first on the board. All right. Public comments. Alright, um, public comments on village, village business. Hearing none.
You're all doing a great job.
Thank you. Schedule a meetings committee of the whole, the next committee of the whole, six fifteen on July twelfth. And we have no closed session. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ferguson.
You guys made it too easy.
Great job. Great job, guys.
That was fantastic.
Fantastic. Now, all the people on Facebook, those four people are gonna be going, did Kristen do better than Dewey?
I don't know.
I'll make a motion, yes.
We both got off to a little bumpy starts, you know?
It wasn't a bumpy start. You did great.
No, we have to.
Hold the question.
No, we, there's no closed session. We're done.
No closed session, okay.
Can I have a, uh, point first?
You let us go.
I know.
That explanation that she did of all that. Did that have all that?
That's so nice. That's the story of our life.
Because I've been, I've been like, well, this, but, but, you know, you know your stuff. There's a lot of rambling. You get some.